are live oops okay now I'm just gonna put the chat on so I can see when people pop into chat one second one second one second this is one watching already okay so we wanna go to here alright so I took screenshot of a question from Reddit and that is here okay so we're given these three matrices and ask to find I guess I cut off that part we're supposed to eh find A times B minus C okay so uh a good thing to do is just to throw these in let's substitute these in actually I don't wanna write A a bunch of times when I don't need to so I'm just gonna write A on the outside and then I'm gonna put the um the B minus C in here so B is zero negative two two one negative one four and seven zero minus C oh this this isn't actually that bad uh one neg one 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 okay this will be a really easy one so let's keep in mind I still have A out here and I'm gonna substitute that in once I evaluate this first part in the parentheses okay so this is B minus A now matrix addition and subtraction is done element wise that means I take zero minus one okay and that's that's the the row one column one entry negative two minus negative one and that's the row one column two entry and so on you do that for every element or every every entry in this matrix so it's gonna be A times um the resultant matrix and I'm just gonna do this uh and and so hopefully I'll be able to kind of narrate as I go and you'll understand what I'm up to here so here's our result matrix so we're gonna do zero minus one negative one negative two minus negative one is negative two plus one is negative one two minus one is one one minus one is zero so two minus one was one and one minus one is zero negative two plus one is negative one then we've got negative one minus one is negative two four minus one is three and seven minus one is six zero minus one is negative one okay let me check to be sure that I have that correct so zero minus one is negative one negative two minus negative one is one two minus one is one one minus one is zero negative one minus one is negative two four minus one is three seven minus one is six zero minus one is negative one okay so yes we're correct here um let's go ahead and I'm just gonna do some computer eraser magic here so that I don't have to um rewrite this a bunch of times uh and now I'm gonna sub in for A so I'm just gonna do a direct substitution for A oh actually I've got the video all sideways here but I don't wanna see the video on my phone I wanna see the chat room just in case you come in um okay so now I'm gonna do I I resolved this whatever B minus C was became this matrix okay now I'm gonna multiply that matrix by the given matrix for A I'm gonna substitute that in for this A which we've been holding there okay so we've got zero negative two zero one and twelve zero two zero now matrix multiplication if you don't know the definition we'd take first row times first column first row times second column second row times first column second row by second column okay so you you do the rows by the columns and then go down row by the column and go down row by the column until you've run out um now if this is an M by N matrix this matrix has to be an N by K it doesn't matter what K is but these uh the the number of columns in this one has to be equal to the number of rows in this one okay and that's just a thing that is required because of the definition of um matrix multiplication that we have alright so we're gonna do zero times negative one which is zero plus negative two times negative one which is negative two plus zero times a negative two which is zero plus one times six so really we have negative two plus six and um this is equal to four so we'll get four and then we gotta do this row times this column now okay and and so notice we're multiplying this element with this element 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 then we're taking the products of all of these and adding them together okay it's an inner product um which is really cool actually um I didn't appreciate this whenever I first started learning it okay so here's same thing we're gonna do the first row by the second column okay so zero times negative one is zero negative two times zero 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 times three is zero so this is very easy we had zero 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 the sum of all those is zero last thing is one times negative one and that goes here okay um actually I want me to get rid of these first now we're gonna do the second row times the first column okay um but this was negative one gotta make sure we get that okay twelve times negative one is negative twelve plus zero times one which is zero and two times negative two which is negative four so we have negative twelve uh minus four is negative sixteen plus zero times six which is zero so this is negative sixteen and lastly we'll do the second row times the second column and so you can see these get really tedious and this is why it's best if you have some software that does this you would do this in software you're only doing it right now this frustr- frustrating calculations the same reason why in calculus you do a bunch of um limit approximations is just because you want to convince yourself by by doing calculations that it actually the limit does exist even though you can't evaluate at that one point if you frustrate yourself with calculations you'll eventually notice patterns and those patterns lead to important theorems so it's good to practice these things even though it's terrible uh I'll freely admit that okay so what did we do here uh okay so twelve times negative one twelve times negative one is negative twelve uh zero times zero two times three is six so negative twelve was six is negative six and then zero times negative one is zero so we're still at negative six so that should be our um our matrix here this is the answer and it looked like someone else actually answered this correctly in the comments I didn't check their answer yet um but I I think that they're right they just wrote it in a format that you know is convenient for Reddit and it's sometimes hard to read that especially if you're new to this kind of math um the longer we've been doing these things we forget how hard it was when we first learned a notation so um this one is each one of these is gonna be like a text box in that text box in that send gauge software so you'll put this where you put the zero in your screenshot and then I didn't keep that part in this when I copied it over here um and then the rest of those each one of these will go in a different box the corresponding box um I see that you joined us do you have any questions hopefully I I mean I just kinda did the calculation other than to say that you know it works the same way like you do parentheses first same kind of order of operations actually that you're used to already um if there are no questions I'm gonna just keep looking for problems on Reddit to solve and if you have more questions send them send me a message on Reddit you know if you like this video um I actually I posted a I I I started a subreddit that has no one in it except for me so you can post questions there too and and like comment subscribe all that stuff would be really appreciated this is the hard part so I saw an answer into this question already I like logarithm exponential problems for whatever reason oh okay I thought this one had an answer I guess not alright okay let's answer how far into this are we this is like ten forty nine I wish there was a hotkey to add image if you are whatever the sketchbook it's one of the sketch up I forget the software is called if you write this software please add a hotkey for adding an image in alright so we are going to solve algebraically for each of these so let's start with A here this is this problem we've got twenty five raised to the X minus one which is equal to five to the three X now a big a big thing with these early exponential problems these equations is that we see that this has a base five we wanna try to express this in the same base as the other side and and these are really contrived questions like you're going to be able to do this um because that's that's what they're teaching you at the moment so what is the square root of twenty five well it's it's five okay so we can express twenty five as five squared so I'm just gonna put this in parentheses that you see that this is raised to the X minus one okay now when I have a base raised to an exponent and then that whole quantity raised to an exponent what do I do I multiply these two together okay so this is equivalent to five times two or five to the two times X minus one okay and that's just one of your exponent rules look over those things and like um try to make sense of them you know especially if they're difficult for you if you find them difficult really just look at them and see them written in different ways you know I I talk about these a lot in all of my videos these exponential rules um wh- how how do they come about you know play with some fractions where it's like A times A equals A squared okay well A times A times A this equals A cubed what's A times A over A times A times A well this is A squared over A cubed but we can see the cancellation here these cancel the one uh so this becomes one over A you know how does this tell us that there's a rule that says we do two minus three here how does this become A to the negative one well we know that this equals one over A also so things like that you you can you can convince yourself of these things instead of having to memorize rules okay sorry now there's two ways that we can look at this you can just look and see that five raised to a number is equal to five raised to a number and you you can make us an argument for yourself that then therefore two X minus one equals three X okay this is totally valid um thing to do now for me I did not like that the first time I saw it so what I realized was that I could take um the log base five of both sides I'll take the log base five of this side now if you take the log base five uh a five raised to the something this cancels out the basis and so then you're just left with two X minus one so same result uh equal to three X okay alright so now from here we'll distribute the two two X minus two equals three X we'll subtract two X from both sides and we get X equals negative two easy peasy right uh if you show up and you're watching this and you have any questions please post it in the chat and as always like subscribe comment do those things that helps YouTube notice me so that maybe someday I'll get paid to do math instead of taking this vow of poverty okay alright so what we're gonna do B now that was the answer I probably this this is the answer and how can we check this let's plug it in yeah yeah just plug it in and it it ends up to be true so solve for each of the following algebraically so we're gonna solve this one now so we have thirty six raised to the three M minus one uh which is equal to six raised to the two M plus five alright so now same strategy I have to figure out what is the base here that has the same basis this like how do I express this as a base six number and we all know that six times six is thirty six right so six squared equals thirty six and then I just keep that three M minus one okay so this is substitution right here we just substituted uh six squared is equal to thirty six okay super easy now if I have a number raised to an exponent and then that whole quantity raised to an exponent I multiply these exponents okay um same rule that we used in the previous problem so this becomes six raised to the two times three M minus one which is equal to six raised to the two M plus five now we just need to figure out what M makes this true right um and we can set this equal to this you can see that that's true if you I mean maybe that's kind of a not really an argument but the way that I liked to do it was take the log so if I take the log basics of both sides then it just cancels this out um and I'll do that here so log base six log base six and so that gets rid of this and that gets rid of this and so we're left with two times three M minus one equals two M plus five okay maybe I should put some brackets around that to keep consistent okay so now this is just a linear or this is actually not even linear uh I guess it's linear we'll we'll just solve this you're super good at this I'm moving this up here you you've been doing this for years now so this is six M minus two distributing the two and then two M plus five so I'm gonna subtract two M from both sides and add two to both sides and then divide by four okay so what did I do I subtracted two M minus two M plus two plus two right then I got this that I divided by four so not rocket surgery let's plug it in and check it thirty six times three er raised to the three times seven fourths minus one equals six raised to two times seven fourths plus five and so this is thirty six uh what is that twenty one over four minus four over four which is six raised to the seven halves plus ten halves oh I'm probably cut off by the video sorry actually I can I can see myself on this I have my cell phone over here okay cool so we're not really cut off I I tried to shrink that video down as much as possible my girlfriend tells me I should keep my face in it but I'm not really so this is thirty six raised to twenty one minus four right is seventeen over four and then this should be equal to if everything works out or we're evaluating that's right I know this is that's for my work so this is our check here um and then so six raised to the se- oh seven halves plus ten halves is seventeen halves and then so you could plug these two in your calculator you'll see that they're equal but we can also do that same trick so thirty six is equal to six squared okay and then raised to the seven teen fourths and then we same thing base raised to an exponent all of this raised to an exponent we just multiply these two together so this is six raised to the two times seven fourteenths which is seventeen halves and questions complaints comments concerns critiques criticisms callouts cause or buffles any of those things whatever oh yeah maybe I should show you this is the answer this is the answer obviously yeah so if you like the video if it helped you subscribe comment give me a dollar on Patreon something please anything helps though if even if you just sent me some good vibes I'll love you uh or send me some good questions that actually really helps cuz I spend a lot of time trying to find the questions as you can see and it's not very easy like I don't like statistics I don't wanna enter answer statistics questions unless it's like machine learning I like statistical learning those are a little more fun but even then I'm not super good at it so I I wouldn't put myself off as I put myself out there as being able to tutor those things come on Reddit alright here we are I think this must be the one that I just answered appropriate title for the left side of the Venn diagram I think Venn diagrams are very cool so if the internet will work we'll see if we can get this I mean my stream looks fine but maybe that's why everything else is going slow can you work out the headings for the Venn diagram could you add other numbers to the sets oh I can hear myself on the cell phone um I really don't know what is going on here yeah sorry bro I have no idea they're not prime they're not multiples or something I can tell no circles are cool I need to answer A but what I am assuming I do is just multiply B into the N that was in the question multiply B into the end that was in the question I'm doubting that that is the answer because it's too simple suppose that N and B are positive integers would be greater than two and the base B expansion of N is N equal to A M times A M minus one uh find the I don't know what that means divide N by N or divide N by B to obtain a quotient and remainder we can use positive integer B greater than one as a base because of this theorem blah 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 that if N is a positive integer it can be expressed okay that is actually not what this says here these are all multiples and I don't know where M comes in suppose that N and B are positive integers B greater than two and the base B expansion of N is so they these must be like the place values so if the okay so let me think about this what K is an integer integers blah 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 there must be some kind of a solution divide N by B to obtain a quotient and remainder so sure yeah okay that makes sense and then you divide the quotient again so next divide Q zero yeah okay so this is equals algorithm algorithm that makes sense alright let's let's try it what is what time is it twenty minutes alright so suppose that N and B are positive integers B greater than two and the base B expansion of N is equal to this find the base B expansion of BN okay so basically what you do is you you take this this is the number that we wanna expand so we divide it by the base um so we divide it by the base and we should make this into A quotient and a remainder so this should be we take our number we divide it by B and we split it up into something that's like B times uh the first quotient plus the remainder right now this remainder will be the A zero okay but in this case that remainder Okay, but in this case, that remainder is zero. So when we divide this by B, our, our first quotient is B, this is equal to B times N plus zero. And then so. Let's think about this, if we keep repeating this process. We would get zero, zero, zero forever, so that means that this terminated it, um, so it's actually just N. So there are N Bs essentially is what this says. Yeah, I think that's right, um, but you know, let me, let me actually look again. At that, I closed it, so base B expansion, I actually just looked this up. Before. Doing this problem, um, cuz I, I had never actually heard of a base B expansion. But, okay, so here's the algorithm, so you have Q and you have K, um, so here. N and B are positive integers of B greater than, uh, one. And so in your problem, they're both positive, well, and then so Q is not equal to zero, so A sub K, alright, is equal to Q mod B. So we take, uh, Q equal to Q divided by B. And then K equals K plus one, so then we just keep doing this until we get. All the way to K minus one. Yeah, and so when we get. When we get it dividing evenly, which is the initial, that's what we get with A, so when the, uh. When, when there's no remainder. We've, we've finished, we're done, that is the base, so. Ah, pretty dope, actually, this gives some examples, so this is the octal expansion. Of one, two, three, four, five, so. And this tells you it's in base ten, so you divide by eight. Okay, so we divide this by eight, it's eight times one fifty, uh, one thousand five hundred forty-three plus one, so this becomes our one's place here, okay? Then we take this first quotient, and we divide that again by eight, okay? And we put the remainder as our second digit. And then we divide this quotient, right, this is Euclid's algorithm. We divide this by eight, we get twenty-four plus zero. And then. We need to do it again. Oh, let me think. Oh, am I right then? So we need to get to eight times zero, but actually, I don't think we can get to eight times zero, so. So B times N equals B times N plus zero, so our first thing is zero, and then we divide N by B, so. N equals. B N over B. So here it doesn't divide any longer. Yeah, so that's gotta be the termination, so it just equals N. Fairly certain, this isn't my area of expertise, so I hope that helps, um, but this, this resource is great, let me put that back up. So I Googled. Base B expansion, I got this pit explanation, but I think that's right. Hopefully, one of the smarter Redditors will get on there and. Correct me. If I'm wrong. How do we write this as an equation, I actually just haven't been answering. Oh, here we go, okay, so. I should probably tell this person what I'm doing. Three comments, oh, that's already solved. It's, it's tough to get to these problems before somebody already solves them. Very good. Yeah, part B of eight, part C of nine, okay, so it looks like nobody's done this one yet. That last problem's really sticking with me. Part B of eight, is there another image? Okay, A, B, and C, A, B, C, and D are four points on the circumference of a circle. T A. Is the tangent to the circle at A. I think I'm gonna keep this one short. Seems like everybody's like not really active right now, uh, because of the school shutdowns, I'm imagining. You just did load them, like seconds ago. No, I don't wanna do this, I've actually never taken topology, I wanna study that cuz I have to get ready for the GRE. And I know that's on there, it's not like a huge part, but it's on there. Okay, find X. Okay, this might be interesting. Nobody answered it, let's give it a whirl. Alright, so we've got the natural log of two raised to the four X minus one. Equal to the natural log of. Eight to the X plus five. Plus. Log base two of sixteen. To the one minus two. Okay, so for me, the first thing that I notice is I have a log base two here, while these are, uh, natural logs, okay? So I know that log base two will cancel out to, to like a, a base two, so if I had log base two. Of two, this is equal to one, right? So. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna re-express. Log, or I'm gonna re-express sixteen as two to the something, right? So this becomes log base two of two to the four. Raised to the one minus two X, okay? Alright, so then I'll just copy down the rest of this. Um, and, and actually, I'm gonna do the same thing, alright, I'm gonna make this, uh, eight, two to the three. Okay. So now I know that I just multiply the exponents here, this is just an exponent rule. Two to the force, ri- work, two to the fourth raised to the one minus two X is the same as two raised to the four times the quantity of one minus two X, this is gonna be. Log two of two times, raised to the four times one minus two X. And then same thing here, this is gonna be a natural log of two raised to the three times X plus five. Okay. Alright. So what can we do here? Okay, so this becomes, the, th- these two cancel out since I took log base two of two, that equals one, and so this just drops down. Or they, they just cancel each other out, and so this becomes four minus, I'm gonna distribute at the same time. Hopefully, that won't confuse anyone, four times one is four, and four times negative two X is negative eight X. Okay, and then, so with these guys. What can we do? So I'll subtract this over to the other side, and then we get log, um. Natural log of two to the four X minus one, minus log of three X plus fifteen. I distributed the three at the same time, equal to this, and then when you subtract two, two logs. Um, then you can use this, uh, quotient rule, I think it's called, so this becomes natural log. Of two to the four X minus one. Divided by two to the three X plus fifteen, now. Here we have two is the same base. Two is the same base, so we can take this exponent minus expo- this exponent, move everything up to the top. So we get log two. And we get four X minus one, minus three X minus fifteen. Um, equal to four minus eight X. And then, let me just get rid of some stuff. And then. This becomes log of two, four X minus three X is X. Negative one minus fifteen is negative sixteen. Which is equal to four minus eight X. And what are we solving for X? So we'll use the exponent rule to bring this down. Okay, so we get X minus sixteen times log of. Two equals four minus eight X. And then. We can distribute that log two, so we get X log two. Minus sixteen log two equals four minus. Eight X, and then let's add eight X, and so, so I'll add eight X. Add eight X, and I'll get X log two plus eight X, minus sixteen log two. Equal to four. And then I'll add sixteen log two, so I'll get X log. Log two plus eight X. Equal to four plus sixteen log two. And then you can see I have an X here and an X here, so I'm gonna factor out my X. And it'll be X times quantity of log two plus eight. Equal to four plus, uh, sixteen log two. And then we can divide by log two plus eight. And so we get X equal to. Let's see if anything factors out here. Um, nope, I don't think so. So four plus sixteen log two divided by eight plus log two, and I just switched those cuz. To keep the same as the, the numerator, um, yeah, I think that's right. Give it a whirl, check it and see, I don't know, I, I don't think I made any mistakes, but you can never tell. Box this, this is, this is what I got. Oh, somebody posted. Hey, you're welcome, I'm, I'm glad it helped, um, and so this will post, you know, after, after we're done with the stream, this will post. And so you can rewind this as much as possible, um, I don't know if you had a, a time crunch for your homework, turning it in. Uh, you're very welcome, which, which one were, is your problem, is it the one that we're working on now? Or is it, um. The matrix one? I'm, I'm like, I should be looking at the camera, but I'm watching you in the chat, I've got the chat on my cellphone. And please subscribe and all that stuff, I, you know, turn the notifications off if you don't like notifications, but it helps to get noticed on YouTube, so. One day, hopefully, I'll get paid for, uh, doing this. And also, please tell your friends. Ah, you're the best man, thank you so much, and post me more questions, cuz it takes me forever to find these questions, you know, it's gotta be something like I can help with. And isn't gonna take forever to do, um, and I have to be able to do it. Like off the cuff, I can't, you know, spend an hour messing up, so it's, it's actually hard to find problems for this. Post me lots of them, I'll, I'll help you with your homework, oh, cool, we got two in the chat. Okay, so, um, Alex, I think that, I think that that's the answer to your question, I feel like ninety percent confident that that's correct. Um, and hopefully it helped, the, was the time hack accurate, were you able to go to that time and like watch it? I- if not, you will be once the video, you'll be able to once the video posts. I- if not, you will be once the video, you'll be able to once the video posts. And y'all tell your friends, like if they send me, if they send me questions, I'm gonna answer them. I had an idea that I would like sponsor uh like a pre-calculus class or a calculus class and. Just work through the entire semester with them. Um I don't know, we could do like a Discord or. Uh Zoom meeting or something like that, just do homework together every night, so if anyone is interested in that, let me know. I can do a few hours a week of that. My uh time has freed up a lot since this coronavirus thing. Okay, so what does antosis mean? So, okay, so if then, if this is true, then this is true. Oh, I see. So we just have to prove this. Okay. Okay, yeah, let let me know, um here, let me actually post this, cause you're probably not at the current thing. If you can't get to it now. It'll be there. After I end the stream. Alright, cool. Yeah, this is great, this is like the most participation I've ever had in the actual live chat, so. Uh that's, that's huge for me. Alright, so we've got A over B plus B over A equals sixty-two. Um, let me tell this person I'm working on this. And please post uh, post more questions, y'all. It it helps me to like, especially if it's something that's like, you know. I've taken it before, um. Then I'll be able to do it. Quickly. Okay, so what are we doing here? Let's start at. And if any of you guys are YouTubers, like. Your, your suggestions on how to do this better would be really helpful, I would really like that a lot. Alright, let's get this going. Grumbles in my tumblers today. So I I actually don't know if I'm gonna be able to solve this one. Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's dope, alright. I don't speak Spanish, although I I should be able to speak Spanish. Like, it's about time to learn. I I um, so I don't know that I'm gonna be able to solve this, but I'm pretty sure that I'll be able to, I'm gonna give it a go, so if you just popped in, um. Then I think we should be able to get you going. Alright, so I see that these have a common denominator here. And um, so I'm just gonna make these guys have a common denominator. I'm going to multiply this one by A over A and then multiply this one by B over B. And so this is gonna give me A squared plus B squared over A B. Now. How can we do this? This is still equal to sixty-two. Wonder if we couldn't complete the square here. Okay, so the first thing I can, I can eliminate is that this is not true. Right, I can actually solve for that, so here I have A B. I can multiply both sides by A B and divide by sixty-two. I get A B equals A squared plus B squared over sixty-two. And that does not equal this. I can also see that this is not true. What about this? Okay, so these are possibilities. Okay, so let's go back to this for a moment. Oh, here we go. Okay, so we'll take A squared. A B plus B squared equals zero. Can we complete the square here? What does this factor already? Uh alright, got a sub, sweet. Thank you Alter Lion, thank you for the sub, you're the best. Alright, so I feel like this sixty-two. Is not a square. It turns out it's sixty-four. Let me just update this thing. Yeah, I'm doing a, I'm doing a stream. Um I'm gonna finish this one, I think, and then I'll probably be done, why did you wanna do something? Okay. Okay, this is interesting. Okay. Hopefully you just saw that, I don't, uh, uh, I don't know if this person is watching. If you're, if you're here watching this, whoever's question this is, please post something, so I know you're paying attention to that. Cause I don't think I could explain what I just did easily, uh. So I would wanna know that you're actually interested in hearing about it. Okay. What am I doing? Okay, so I guess I completed the square, uh this becomes A plus B. Squared equal to sixty-four A B, I could take the square root of both sides. And I get A plus B equal to eight times root A B. Let's bring this up here. Now. I see that I want to divide by this. Um root A B here to make it look like everything under the cubic root. And so I get, I divide both sides by root A B, I get A plus B over root A B. Equal to eight. And then I take the cube root of both sides. And I get three over A plus B. Root A plus B equal to two. Which is A, so, okay. Yeah, hopefully, let me just, just edit this real quick. Friends texted me. Friends text me. Alright, so yeah, I I think I'm gonna end the stream if anyone is just, if anyone is still in here. Oh, this person did a solution, I wish I'd seen that before I. Let's see. Okay, cool. True. Um, yeah, this is really cool too, uh, let me make sure I follow what you did. So A plus P equals X squared or X cubed, we don't know what it is, but it's X cubed. Okay. Square both sides. Nice. Oh, that's tricky. Yeah. That's really cool. Yep, whoever that, let me post back there. Okay, alright, um, yeah, I think I'm gonna call it. So thank you to all those people that posted questions, um, and if you see this, if you come across this later, please post. You know, questions either in the homework help subreddit, go to my subreddit, which has nothing in it, you'll be the first person to post a question. Um, but it would mean a lot to me, so. Alright, cheers, y'all.